I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Clapper, could you please call the roll?
Chairman Di Maria.
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht.
Here.
Mr. Bushnell.
Here.
Mrs. Purdy.
Here.
Mrs. Sebeski.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Student liaisons, Ms. Small.
Here.
Mr. Whedon.
Here.
Dr. McGorick, are there corrections and additions to the agenda?
We have an addition to the consent agenda, which is a personnel addendum.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add, under the action agenda finance, a CIP carryover budget transfer.
Superintendent's announcements and spotlight.
Thank you Chairman Di Maria, Dr. McGorick, other members of the board. Good evening to all who are here tonight to help us celebrate our superintendent's spotlights for the evening. I'd like to begin, first of all, this is our favorite moments, but I'd like to begin first of all with the Metz Robotics team. Tonight, we'd like to offer congratulations to Team 173M from the Metz Robotics team for winning the teamwork challenge award at the Northern Virginia VEX IQ Challenge at Manassas Park Middle School, which was held on Saturday, January 17th. This was the first time they have ever competed at the VEX IQ event, and they finished 10th out of 32 teams after the qualifying rounds. Competing first in the final round, they scored 66 points, tying for the highest score earned all day, and earning the Metz team the VEX IQ Teamwork Challenge Award. This is the first award earned by the Metz Robotics team. The team has earned a spot to the VEX IQ High Rise Challenge, Virginia State Championship by Nova Systemic Solutions, on Friday, February 20th and February 21st in Dazwell, Virginia. The following students from the team are here tonight. Ms. Isabella Behren, Victor Neberet, Justin Reyes, William Stevens, and Byron Washington, if you all could come forward. I think their advisor, Mr. Newman, is here. He's in the back. We'll just let him wave at everybody. We know he's taking pictures. This is tremendous for this team, for their first competition like this. You trying to get pictures? Go, go. Yeah. Y'all scoot in a little bit.
I think you need a picture with Mr. Newman.
He said he didn't want to be in it. I told him to come on. He wanted to be about the students. I'll say thank you to everyone for your patience in affording them the opportunity to capture these moments, because that's very important. Martin Luther King Day Youth Oratorical Contest. The Prince William County Alumni Chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority has sponsored the Martin Luther King Day Youth Oratorical Contest for the past 25 years. On Monday, January 19th, students from Prince William, Manassas Park, and Manassas City Public Schools participated in the contest. Although we did not have an MCPS student to advance in the competition, we would like to acknowledge each school-level winner for representing Manassas City Public Schools so very well. Please join me in congratulating from Osborne, David Garcia Ruiz; from Metz Middle School, Zach Novak; and from Mayfield Intermediate School, Karsten Taylor.
This young man is a ninth grader, starting out in the competition is unbelievable. And I was very proud that he participated, and I hope that we see you back again next year doing that.
Yes, great.
See how sly we are?
That's right. They're tall. Good, Dr. McGorick. That's it? Oh, one more. Go ahead. Did you get it? Go ahead. Look up. Okay, thank you. Congratulations, gentlemen. Okay, our next recognition is for the Osborne High School Auto Tech, and the fact that they have full accreditation for their program. The Auto Tech program is now accredited through the National Automotive Technicians Education Foundation, and accredited program ensures students have access to the highest standards in automotive service training and the chance to earn college credits while still in high school. The program at OHS is led by instructor Keith Riley, who was applauded by the evaluation board for many, many home runs within his program, including safety, attitude, continuing education, and exposing students to the most relevant automotive systems. This was a tedious process that included a self-evaluation performed by program instructors, administrators, and advisory committee members, who surveyed former and current students of the program. An onsite visit by a trained evaluation team leader was also conducted before the program was officially approved. This is a tremendous accomplishment for the program, and we are proud to have representatives from the group here tonight. Please join me in congratulating them as they come forward. Mr. Keith Riley, instructor for the program. And we have the following students, Sarah Malos, Daniel Pita, and Jose Cruz Villa Vicencio. We do have one more recognition for tonight, our Principal Appreciation Week. On behalf of the Virginia Board of Education and the Department of Education, Governor Terrence McAuliffe has signed a certificate of recognition declaring January 25th through the 31st as Virginia Principals Appreciation Week. The role of the principal as the instructional leader of the school is very important. MCPS principals work diligently to help students and teachers excel, and their leadership and hard work are essential to the success of our schools. Please join me in congratulating them for their tireless efforts, and as I call your names, would you please come forward tonight? From Osborne High School, Kathy Benner. Middle School, Principal Tim Arrington. From Mayfield Intermediate School, Mr. Ken Kratzer. Dean Elementary, Dr. Zella Jones. From Round Elementary, Cara Mills. Eames Elementary, Mr. Dave Rupert. Two additional principals who couldn't be with us tonight, from Baldwin Elementary, Dr. Ashley Cramp, and from Hayden Elementary, Dr. Amanda Wilder. I'd like to congratulate all of you, and thank you so much for what you do for our students and our staff each and every day. Thank you. Now we get to salute you, so. Oh, yeah, that's good. Y'all look great. There you go. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Those are our recognitions. Thank you.
I guess the entertainment's over.
Mr. Williams, anything on academics?
Yes, briefly. The academics committee met last week. We met with Dr. Saunders and Mr. Lyon, who gave us some exciting possible news about pre-K reading initiative, which we hopefully hear more about in the future. And that is all.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Sebeski, anything on policy?
Yes, sir. Policy committee met. As you can see on the agenda, these were unanimously agreed upon by the committee, and we set a future date of May 5th to meet again, unless something else were to come before the committee before then. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Albrecht, anything on education?
No, sir. No report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bushnell, finance?
The finance committee met earlier tonight. We approved a number of informational items that would be shared with the full board at its Thursday Budget Work Session. We also approved unanimously a transfer of funds, closing out some projects and using the money within CIP to fund a new project, which will appear later on the agenda. And we set our next meeting for February 24th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, sir. Anything on personnel?
No, sir.
Thank you. Four numbered comments. We're going to start with our birthday girl. Ms. Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have two ways that you can support the Osborne students this weekend. Their play Much Ado About Nothing will be showing at 7:00 PM this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And if you'd like to see the, its academic debate team's close match that they did at the NBC studio a couple of weeks ago, it's Saturday at 10:30 on NBC.
Who's the captain of that team?
It's a Jack. I don't know. It's my brother.
You don't know?
I didn't know.
Set her up like that. Mr. Whedon, please.
I'd just like to invite everyone out to Mayfield's First Annual Academic Bowl. It'll be taking place on February 4, 2015, at 6:00 PM, and just come out and support.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Purdy.
Yes. So, it's really always nice when you see what's happening, both from the students as well as from the faculty. So, you know, having robotics in my blood, of course, I'm really tickled to see what these guys are doing. And I'm always particularly appreciative that the schools have chosen to participate in VEX Robotics. That's actually one of the more rigorous robotics programs that schools can participate into, so you can kind of take it to the bank that those kids are learning a lot in terms of math, and science, and teamwork, and stuff. So, I applaud those kids, as well as their teachers and their principal for participating in that program. Same thing, I want to make a mention, Martin Luther King, whenever that day rolls around, always makes me frankly think of my mom. Now, why is that? Because my mother always had a saying, "I say what I mean, and I mean what I say." So, when she told us, "We better make up our beds," we better make up our beds. And he's kind of the ultimate die, when you think about it. He said what he meant, and he meant what he said, and he went out and did it. And so, that's a pretty amazing role model. And so, to have kids that really think through and write about that and be recognized for that is a good thing. And then finally, from the Auto Tech perspective, one of the things that's been interesting is, over the years, my family and I, we've acted as a host student for exchange students. And one family was from Germany, and they were just absolutely horrified that my husband and my son knew how to work on cars. They were just scared to death of the fact that they could do stuff at home. And let me tell you, I kind of like the fact that my husband knows how to work on cars, even though mechanic is not his chosen field. It has saved us thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars over the years. So, even if those kids don't continue to pursue a career in auto mechanics, that is such a good life skill to have. It is going to come in handy. And so, that's why another one of those gifts that just keep on giving. Happy birthday. I know this is a big deal. You've got a lot of milestones heading in front of you, very quickly in short order. So, and I know you're going to continue to handle them with grace. And then finally, I want to bring up, you heard from the finance committee, we added an action associated with the CIP. And I wanted to bring up two concerns that are still troubling me, and I'm very, very grateful to Mr. Bushnell, who is the chair of the finance committee. He has committed to, you know, continuing to pull the thread on what we are doing with regards to the situation we're in with the new school. And I really, really applaud that there's going to be a dialogue where we look under the hood. The two concerns that I'm frankly, I'm hoping and praying that we are going to dispel, but the hope is not a method, so I'm glad we're taking time to pay attention to them. The first concern is, when you looked at the presentation about Baldwin from last week, we said, you know, in our plan, that we needed to build this much capacity. But because our estimate was so far off, we can only build this much. So, that means there was a piece of that capacity that's missing. And so, as a kind of a short-order mitigation technique, the things that we're going to be able to do is, is we are going to be able to rent trailers, and there's a possibility that we may have to ask to move the construction of the new dean to the left. Well, dean is supposed to give us this much, Baldwin was supposed to give us much, for grand total, this much, but we're still missing that one piece. So, my fear is, we may still have some construction and costs in the future. So, part of what I'm really tickled about, what Mr. Bushnell is planning to engage in, is looking at creative ways to see, is there a way to close that gap without continuing to put burden on the taxpayers? The other thing that is also a worry is, when I was asking questions about the methodology by which we arrived at the number for the new dean, the superintendent was very, very quick to give us information and verify that we did, in fact, escalate the number for dean, taking into account time, value, money, and there was, in fact, an increase that Mr. Williams asked for. However, I still remain concerned, because the original number that we escalated from was built the same way the original Baldwin estimate is built from. So, if you just do a back-of-the-avro calculation, and if the original Baldwin estimate was off by 30 percent, and you just take a factor of 30 percent on top of the dean, we might still possibly be in a situation where we're still several million dollars short. So, again, I want to thank Mr. Bushnell for committing to really drill into this, so that we can look at all possible avenues for continuing to provide the capacity that we think we're going to need, and do it in a way where we can be as efficient and as effective as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations to all the honorees earlier this evening, and also to Mr. Riley and Mr. Newman for being excellent role models and teachers. And also, thank you to all our principals. I see one of them's still here. You guys do a great job, you're always recognized, but we really appreciate the work you've done with our students, because if you don't do that work, who will? So, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Sebeski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to congratulate everyone that was recognized tonight. It's always such a great privilege to see the wonderful things that are going on with our students and our teachers and across all of our schools, and so I always enjoy getting to hear about those great things. So, thank you all, and especially to our principals. I know that you have great challenges, but you deal with them with grace and integrity, and you do a great job, and our schools are thriving because of all the hard work that you and the examples that you've helped set in place. I went yesterday, along with Mr. Di Maria, to the Capitol Conference in Richmond, where the governor did speak to the Virginia School Board's members that were there. And our own, Mr. Sanford Williams, was recognized by the governor for his work on the SOL Reform Committee. And a lot of that work that they have done is going forward through the General Assembly, and I appreciate those efforts by you. A couple of other things that were brought up that I'd like to share with the community, because I think that it's important that you understand what is going on in public education in Virginia and across the nation. I'm just going to hit a few highlights from yesterday's conference that were particularly intriguing, as we were there for four hours, five hours. So, one thing is that the free and reduced lunch status in Virginia, as of 2013, has increased to 33.5 percent statewide. Nationwide, it is now up to 50 percent. So, our numbers here in the city of Manassas are not that far off from where the nation stands. One of the other things that you might find, though, interesting when I tell you that statistic, is that the per pupil ratio in 2007 is not but a few dollars difference than what it is in 2014. When I say that, the funds that are allocated from the state of Virginia per pupil in the state are not that much different. I challenge you to ask the question, however, when you, how much more do you pay for a gallon of milk, or a gallon of gas, or clothes, or a vehicle, or our homes? All of those things in the last eight years have increased tremendously, but yet, the funding that's coming from our state to educate our children are not that much different. So, the thing that was presented was, if you adjust it for inflation, in 2007, the state was paying $4,868 per pupil. In 2014, with adjusted inflation, however, they're only paying $4,250 per pupil. So, even though the cost, the expenditure is the same, when you look at inflation, you can see that the funds from the state continue to be less. So, why do I tell you all of this? Because there continues to be tough choices where money is gone and is used. Virginia is the eighth wealthiest state in the nation. However, when you look at the per capita of what we spend for education, I think it's 29th.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-ninth, average, yep, twenty-six. State per pupil funding pre-K, we're actually ranked 38th, even though we're the eighth wealthiest state in the nation. Our teachers, the average salary for a public school teacher in the state of Virginia is ranked 29th in the nation. Yep, we're the eighth wealthiest. You might also like to know that the state correctioned expenditure, we're ranked 13th in the nation. That might have something to do with the fact that the state per pupil funding is ranked 38th. I believe there's a direct correlation. We cannot continue to not understand that our students, our young people, must be educated if we are going to have a successful nation in the future. And that takes every single one of us understanding what our part in that plays. And so, I challenge you to think through that and understand that as we go through this very difficult budget season that both the school board, and our city council, and our state go through. And I just would like to address the fact that I do believe that this board operates with great integrity and transparency in all matters. There's nothing that the community cannot find in notes or in everything that we do. We ask lots of questions of all of our staff on a regular basis, and decisions are made with great thought and integrity. And I enjoy working with all of you and appreciate the hard work that this board puts in for the benefit of everyone in the city of Manassas. Thank you.
Thank you. When she started railing on the state, I thought it was you talking. Mr. Bushnell?
He rubs off when you sit by.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. First, Ms. Small, happy birthday. You have been a remarkable addition to this board, as the pioneer and the first student appointed. You've made a real difference, and you've made it much harder for everyone who follows you. We know that you're going to have a wonderful, happy, and successful future as you leave here and move on, but happy birthday, and you've really made a difference here.
Thank you.
You should feel good about that.
I'm going to do this.
Last week, or two weeks ago, sometime recently, I had the opportunity to sit down with a number of community leaders and business leaders, and talk about the same exciting pre-K reading initiative that Mr. Williams referenced. More on that to come, but there's some really exciting stuff happening out there with early childhood education. And one of the most important things to remember is that if you can help a child learn to read when they're four, when they're five, the more they can read, the better they can read by the time they get to two, out of kindergarten, the better their chances are of being successful, both in education and in life. So, the more steps we can take to help kids who don't have reading skills early on, the better off we are as a society and as a school system. So, thank you, committee, for looking at that. Finally, I wanted to mention, and you probably can't see this very well, but there's a census brief that the University of Virginia prepared on Virginia population. And it shows, I think, some of the challenges. And you can see that the state of Virginia is all blue, for the most part, and the blue is declining enrollment across the system. Northern Virginia, there's a pocket of some communities that grew 0.5 percent, and some that grew more than 5 percent, 2008 to 2013. We're a community that grew 14 percent in that period. So, while 85 percent of the state declined enrollment, we had changing demographics and increasing numbers of students, with static numbers from the state, and more requirements from the federal government and the state government telling us how to use the limited resources we have. So, it's a very graphic, very telling map that says, some communities in this state are much more under pressure than others. And the other thing that I've seen a lot of research about in the last couple of weeks, it affirms the fact that, or confirms the fact, that students who come from impoverished socioeconomic backgrounds, students who come from poverty, the gap between their success and the success of non-poverty students is now the greatest gap in public education. It's greater than the gap between races, it's greater than the gap between languages, it's the greatest possible gap. And yet, you heard that nationwide, 50 percent of our kids live in poverty. So, 50 percent of the kids in the United States have to overcome the largest gap possible in terms of their success in their education. It all shows what challenging times these are for those of us in education, for our superintendent and our staffs, and the challenges that we're under, both financially and otherwise, to be successful.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm certainly, I have television set, because I got to see snow, really looks like. Apparently, they're having it up in New York and Boston.
They can have it.
Mr. Bushnell's number is kind of staggering, 14 percent growth in the period he talked about, in a timeframe when this city has allegedly been landlocked and we're out of land. So, I'm sure glad we didn't have any available farms, because I don't know what that number would have been. I am also serving, Mr. Williams is on the SOL Task Force, I'm serving on a virtual learning task force. It's really interesting to watch our state government at almost work. See?
That wasn't quite that bad.
Well, you know, the SOLs, and it must be taken on a mobile device, and that means something to all of us here. It could be a phone, it could be a tablet, it could be a laptop, it could be lots of stuff, but to the Commonwealth, it's got to be a laptop. Even though we're trying to go to affordable things like netbooks and other kind of things in every school system across the Commonwealth, yet, they haven't quite figured out yet, whether it's the testing company, or the state, or who it is, I don't know, but how to break the code and how to actually enable the test to be used on multiple platforms. If we're really going to break the digital divide and get into true blended learning environments, and really use virtual learning, our state, if we're the eighth wealthiest in the nation, really needs to figure that out, because we're the home, especially in the nation, really needs to figure that out, because we're the home, especially in northern Virginia, and even central Virginia, in Charlottesville area, to a lot of technology companies. We ought to be able to figure that out, one would think. But, and it gets us, I think, to Mrs. Sebesky was talking about, with budgets, and we've all talked about it on this dais, it continues to happen. The requirements don't change, but the expectation of the federal and the state government is local government will continue to pay a larger and larger share of the federal and state mandates. And it really comes down to, what do we believe public education is? It is the gateway out to a better life. The single biggest thing we can do, the biggest moral thing we can make is graduate a child to the unemployment line. The best thing we can do is give them the clear life skills to be successful. So, it's not only a tax policy issue, it's a moral issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Couple things to what you all have addressed about the SOL Reform Committee. The governor spoke to us, is that just yesterday?
Yeah.
Yesterday, what Mrs. Sebesky spoke about, and he called out our own Sanford Williams, congratulated him on the great work he's done on that committee. And thank you very much, sir, for that. It's good to hear your name spoken by our governor in front of the rest of our colleagues. Mrs. Purdy, I understand your concern with the Dean cost. We have in the process of hiring a consultant to give us the, a better idea of what kind of numbers we're going to need as far as capacity goes there. And when those numbers come back, again, we will try and figure out exactly what we're going to do with Dean and what the cost will be. I also agree with Mrs. Purdy on the autotech thing. I've said it all along, no matter what we do with CTE at the high school, if they don't go into that career, that's okay, because they, it's life skills. Everything in CTE is life skills. I learned a little bit of it at Osborne, and most of it I learned on a farm, but it's very nice to be able to do your own work, especially when you work on your farm, you can't afford somebody to pay for it.
Better when your husband does it.
What's that? Oh, it's better when, yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, Sue says the same thing. It's better when you can hire somebody to do it, but, you know, we can't do that. But it's a wonderful life skill. And back to the pre-K thing that Mr. Williams and Mr. Bushnell spoke of, as long as I've been on this board, eight and a half years, I've been an advocate of pre-K education. One time, we were asked, you know, the sky's the limit, what do you want? I want enough space and teachers to have every four-year-old in this city in pre-K. Because when you build a building, the most important thing in that building is that footer. If you don't get the footer right, if you don't get the base right, it's going to crumble. And I'd really like to do as much as, we do as much as we can. I'd really like to get some help to do more than we are doing now, to make sure that all of our four-year-olds are in some sort of pre-K. It's a daunting task, but I'm very happy that we're at least looking at it and doing something to figure out a way to help our young, young, young children read better. And that completes our board members' comments. We will go to citizens' comments. I don't have anybody signed up. Should I read this? Does anybody want to speak? Then I won't waste 45 seconds of your life to tell you what you can say. Okay. We will move on to the consent agenda.
Chairman, I move to option the consent agenda.
Second.
As amended, sir?
As amended, as modified.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mrs. Sebesky, that the School Board of Manassas approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I carry 7-0, 6-0. We miss you. Safe and Schools Advisory Council, Dr. McGorick.
Chairman Di Maria, members of the board, and Dr. McGorick, good evening. And this evening, I will present to you a staff's request to develop a Safe Schools Advisory Council to begin next month, February of 2014, 15. The goal of this council is simply to support the safe and supportive learning environments through community engagement, which I'll get more involved in what that means in the upcoming slides. The primary purpose of this recommended appointed council will be to support the safety and security of students, staff, and schools, provide a dialogue to promote effective communication regarding mental health and substance abuse issues, to better understand community needs through parental input, assist the school division in the development of recommendations for improvement, maintain effective working relationships with community partners, and finally, to respond to concerns from the School Board and the superintendent. The council would meet primarily during the fourth Wednesday of each month, from 6:00 PM to 8:15 PM at the central office. The council will consist of a parent from all eight schools, school counselors, one from the elementary, K-5, and then one, K-6, and one, 7-12, school administrators, central office staff, community-based mental health agencies, Manassas City Police Representation, and the Novant Health Prince William Medical Center representative. The council currently is going to consist of 21 members, as you can see from this slide. It is asked that the members of this council commit through June of 2016, so about a year and a half. As you can see from this slide, the first eight names represent the parents that have agreed to this council, should the board approve this. You can see myself, Mr. Collins, and Mrs. Thompson will be the central office representation. Our assistant principals that primarily work with the counseling and student services are also on this committee. And our two therapeutic day treatment centers, Crossroads and National Counseling Group, will represent their companies on this. You can see we have Prince William Community Services as well. We are still working on a person from the Prince William Medical Center. They are committed, they're just still working on who that person's going to be, and we should know that within the next week. You can see we have an elementary school counselor from Dean Elementary, Lieutenant Morbeto from the Police Department, who's very involved with our school resource officers, Safe and Secure Schools, Safe and Secure Communities, is really excited about this, Mr. Maiden from Osborne High School, and finally, a School Board liaison, Mrs. Sebesky. It is requested that this council begins on February the 18th. Staff will ask for approval of this council at the next board meeting on February the 10th. And our first meeting will be introductions in our organization. We will introduce and together collaborate on our bylaws. We will discuss our first project, and then recommendations from the council on future That concludes our presentation at this time, or my presentation at this time, and I stand ready for any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, sir. Does the board have any questions or comments?
Mr. App, just so I'm clear, because you didn't talk about it, we already, I believe, have a school health advisory board, and you talked about this promoting effective communication with mental and substance abuse issues. But obviously, with the police force, and you talked about safety and security as well, is the intent that we don't have overlapping governance and charters, that the SHAB would be abolished and replaced by this?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. Currently, the SHAB, and for many years, meets quarterly. Their main objective this year is working on wellness. I've spoken with Mrs. Thompson about this, and the plan is, is that SHAB, as it exists, is no longer required by the state. This would replace that. It's very possible that Mrs. Thompson will continue with a wellness committee. It may or may not be the people on the current SHAB committee, but this group would be committed to meet, meeting monthly for about two hours each evening. So yes, it would be phased out at the end of this year. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. App.
Hey, thank you.
Finance, CIP budget transfer.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you.
In looking at the projects that are currently open, six projects can be closed. I would like to move that the School Board of City of Manassas close six projects. Transferring $81,664.52 from those projects. Of that amount, $50,000 would go to fund the Baldwin Soil Project, and the remaining $31,664.52 would go back into the CIP reserve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mr. Albrecht. Is there any discussion?
Let me just tell you what the projects are that are being-
Thank you, sir.
And don't forget, so you're waiving second reading.
Oh, yes. I'd like to move that we waive second reading, because we need to start the soil project.
Is that okay with the second?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And can you give me the numbers one more time, sir? Eighty-one thousand?
It's a total of $81,664.52 that will be transferred from projects that are being closed out. $50,000 of that would go to the Baldwin, to fund the Baldwin Soil Project, and the remaining $31,664.52 would go back into the CIP reserve.
Okay. Thank you.
The projects that are being closed out are the Classroom Trailer Division-wide for this year, it's a total of $3,903.47. The Osborne Scoreboard, a total of $1,017.52. The Mets Track Replacement, $1,661.97. Mets Parking Lot Improvement, $27,626.92. Dean Paint, $600. And Round Security System, $46,854.64. So it's a total of $81,664.52 on these six projects that are completed, in which we had allocated more funds than was necessary to complete them. And we'd like to transfer a piece of the overage to fund the soil project, so we don't have to find other funding for it.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other discussion? Do you have a question? Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mr. Albrecht, that the School Board of City of Manassas close out six completed projects on the CIP. CIP totaling $81,664.52, and that we move $50,000 to the Baldwin Soil Removal Project, and move $31,664.52 to the CIP reserve, and we waive second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry 6-0. It's quarter eight.
Move we adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Bushnell, that we adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carry 6-0. Thank you all.